Hello, everyone. We're live. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we're joined by Greg and Amanda Kilwin, founders of Get Oiling. Hi, guys. We also have Julie, Kim, Colin, and our little helper here joining us as well. Macy, say hi Macy.
There you go.
Baby steals the show always. When does a baby not steal the show? So today, you guys, we have some really exciting news and we're going to do some show and tell with this. Julie here alerted us to a really cool thing that we could do and Greg was like, oh, I can do that. And Greg did that and it was actually like this really kind of miraculous quick turnaround. And now you have an easy button to bring beautiful designs into your Get Oiling system, not just to design things, but also if you are, let's say, for instance, creating a PDF, like a guide, a freebie, a lead magnet, you can instantly import that stuff into your Get Oiling account and cut the workflow in half. So we are going to get into that today. We also have two live website reviews scheduled. I hope you guys are here as you're coming in. Go ahead and let us know where you're coming in from. How are things in your neck of the woods? If you're brand new here, welcome. We are for anyone who is looking to grow a business with Young Living from distributor all the way to, what is it, brand? Are we still calling distributor, brand partner? I don't know. There's all kinds of fun changes happening here and today we're going to talk about one that saves you time. So without further ado, welcome. Good to see people coming in from all over the place. We love you too Heidi and also Florida would be nice right now. All right. So yeah, Greg, if you would like to maybe take over, I'm going to give, I need to make you co-host so you can do that. But yeah, tell us, I guess, a little bit more about what exactly this is, you know, where it happens. And then I'll actually be showing you guys a real Get Oiling members' account with examples of how you can use this thing.
Sounds good. Yeah, let me know when you get there. It is I'm the co-host. So let me share away. Yeah, I got some exciting changes here with Canva. Now it's like an easy Canva button, literally is a button. I'll show you where that's at. But yeah, the, as Ashley said, the inspiration came from this. From Julie posted a link in our chat and we're like, that looks really cool. And I looked at it. I'm like, this is really easy, quick to do. So anyway, now there's some fun new stuff inside the system in a couple of different places. And I mean, this is just one of the screens where it's at, but because the Canva integrations anywhere that you have this little editor here, which you see throughout the system on many, many, many pages. So there's no, we don't have like one big list of all the places that this is because it's pretty much everywhere. But now under this little more rich icon or well, actually it's under insert image. There's a Canva button, which allows you to pop up a little design from Canva. Now, this, you do have to choose, you know, depending on what you're doing, like if you're writing a blog post, you have to figure out exactly what of these makes the most sense. And I think Ashley is going to cover that a little bit more. But let's say I do a blog banner. You can choose between an image and a PDF, even do custom sizes and then open up Canva right in here. Now my Canva account isn't as exciting as the one that Ashley is going to demo. So I won't get into the details about this, but I'll just show you here. So like I'll grab one of these sort of blank templates. Obviously if you want to customize it, but then you push the send to Get Oiling button. It then prepares your design and gives you a cool little quote, adds it to your image gallery. Or if you did a PDF, it would actually add it to your files. And then once it's done sending that over, it automatically appears right in here. And it is actually even in your image gallery. So if I go over to the browse here for the image gallery, there it is. So it's like saving you so many steps of having to download and upload and all this other, all those other stuff. So the, the editor is one of the biggest places where this is at. You know, it's under the, well, it's also here under this ad design from Canva button. If you, you know, I missed it here under this image button. But it's also in some other places in the system. Like if you're going to be in contact manager, for example, and you're sending a text, let's just push this button, for example. And you can select the pictures that you want to send to the text message. Well, if you hit add image, that takes you over here and now there's an ad design from Canva button there. So you can go through that whole process. It'll show up like the image I just made right here goes up right here. So I could just use that, but you can basically like design these things on the fly and add them to your text messages. There's other places where this is handy too, like under, when you're setting up your site here and customize my site. You can choose to build a custom share image, custom fab icon, the little image that appears up here in the corner. Site logo is like, these are all integrated with the ad design from Canva button. It's in the page editor too. You know, there's just so many cool integration points that you'll find this throughout the system. But I'll, I'll make the page here, just grab a page, make a new one. And when you're in here, say editing the background, there's an ad design from Canva button. You can just pop the design right in there, like on the fly without having to leave the system. It's just so cool. I love it. But anyway, those are the main points, kind of highlights. So I'll hand it over here to Ashley to show all the cool stuff that she's got planned too.
Yeah, you guys, this is so stinking exciting. I mean, what this used to look like was, was that you would go into Canva and you'd have to design your thing and then you need to download it the right way. And then you gotta find it in your downloads. God forbid you're on a tablet or a mobile device. And then, and then you gotta upload it and then you gotta wait till it's uploaded, then you gotta select it. And then it's, so it's, it's a bunch of steps, right? And it adds up, especially if you're doing something like designing a page. And the thing is, is you know, even if you are batch producing your work, if you've been through any of the trainings that I've done, like in the personal branding intensive, batching your work is a good thing to do and you should still be doing this, but that doesn't mean that you don't still find yourself. Like after you've, I've prepared and I have all of these things, I still just need that one image, right? Like this still happens to me and I've got to stop what I'm doing, go over to Canva. And breaking that flow takes up so much time and mental space. Like science actually has, I'm, I'm going to butcher this right now, but there is from divided attention and splitting focus. We waste so much time, energy and productivity. So being able to stay right here inside of where you're doing the work in Get Oiling, when you're making a newsletter or building a page, not having to, to switch context in your work and go do a different thing is, is something that's going to help you to stay on task, to feel more in flow and, and really just to be able to get more out of what you're doing in less time. So thank you guys for Julie for pointing this out and Greg for making this happen. This is so cool. We have a Canva button and Canva has a Get Oiling button. That's pretty stinking cool, you guys. All right. So what I would like to-
One quick thing before you hop into that, you do need a separate Canva account. Just point that out. You know, it is a separate thing. It doesn't like come with your account. And I think they've got a free tier or something too, right? So, but you do have to set up a separate account. There's a link in there if you don't already have a Canva account on that first pop up. There's a link you can use to get an account set up.
And if you have an existing account, it's fine. Like this is, and actually like what, what I would recommend that you do. And again, if you're in the personal branding intensive, you've probably done this already, where you set up your Canva brand kit, right? Where you've, you've decided, these are my colors. These are my fonts. You set up your brand kit in Canva. So it's really easy when it's time for you to go and start creating a design. You can add elements, swap out colors and all of that really quickly. The text is already there selected with the same text you're using on your website and on and on, right? So if you've already done that, this is going to be an absolute breeze for you. So highly recommend that you consider getting that done. And also actually you don't have to be in the personal branding intensive to see this because we have several YouTube videos from the first of, the first of this year of 2021. That's a personal branding for Young Living distributors, the two-part series. And we actually give you Canva templates to create your, your brand guideline, your logos and, and sort of develop what your brand colors are and putting those into Canva. So definitely check out those trainings. We'll link them in the description of this on YouTube for you to reference them so that you can have your Canva all set up and ready to go. And I'll show you what that looks like here in just a second in Jessica Domon's account. We've, we've used Jessica Domon's account to show you guys some cool stuff in the past with, with our link page for social. She uses it for her Instagram, which is, you know, something that's working wildly successfully for her. She's just recently released a course with us, Modern Social Mama, where a lot of that stuff is covered. And we do cover this in there too. So for those of you who are part of that course, get excited because the stuff that she teaches, you now can double duty. If you're creating a post that is for social media, you can actually import whatever you did and then plug that into an email and just put it right into your Get Oiling account and send it out to your subscribers, add it to your blog and so on. It's just going to shorten your workflows so, so, so much. Okay. So let's get started. I'm going to share here and hopefully we'll be able to see this. So it does integrate, just to answer your question, Astraea, it integrates with your current Canva account. So you don't have to create a new one, but you do need to have one. You do also, you don't need to have Canva Pro for this. Actually, one of the things, Greg, I don't think you touched on this. There's one thing, and this is really kind of on the Canva end at this point. At the time of filming, there's not a way to import an image directly from Canva into Get Oiling with a transparent background. So if you have a logo that you want to use for your site and you're wanting to put that over here on, I was on Customize My Site. You want to put a logo here that is, that's got a transparent background, you will want to download that separately for your site if you want it to show up. So if we look at Jessica's, you can see that, well, actually you can't really tell on here. You can't tell until we're on, I think it's our built-in themes where you can really see if a, if, if this is transparent background or not. So if you have a transparent background logo that you want to use, that is something you want to set up separately. But let's go ahead and take a look at a couple of quick things. So I'll start with, again, you, you should be focusing on creating the bulk of your work in batches, right? So if it's time for you to create social posts, make your five social posts that you're going to do for the week all at once, right? Make your, if you're writing your blog posts, highly recommend write four of them at a time. Design the four custom images you want to use for your Good Oiling site so that they're here. However, if you do find yourself in a position to where you, you want to have, what, if, if you have it prepared, right? You just really need it and you need to get it done. What we're going to do is we'll just start with the blog. So let's pretend like we're going to write a new blog post here. So Jess is probably going to have her stuff prepared already. Again, she's, she follows the batch creation that I teach. So she'll have all of that ready to copy, paste and format in here. But then it's time to actually create an image. And actually, do we have that set up here? So what we would have to do is actually come and create it down here, right? Like, because here on the featured image, we need to add that here. We just realized we don't have that. Okay. Yeah, we'll try it. Well, okay, let's try another one. She does send emails out regularly. So how about we do this? We're going to go to, to manage. I'm going to send this to me. Let's see, I'm going to be mine at Get Oiling. There we go. I'm going to, let's pretend like we're sending this to a lot of people. But we want to send a newsletter, right? We want to send out, you know, a graphic that's got information about something that's coming up. So what we can do here is click this Canva button. And I would like to use the, I mean, I'm going to make a square image. So if you ever want to use a square image, all you have to do is type in logo. That's one of the preset canvas sizes. You also have the ability to create something custom and you can see what the sizes are when you choose it. So in Canva, this is 500 by 500. If I wanted this to be blog banner, which would be a large thing that would go across the top. That usually is going to show, well, okay, anyway, you could, you can fool around with that. So that is a PDF. That's an image. That's why it did that. So what we're going to do is go back to logo. Open Canva. There, there we go. You can see it opening. We haven't left Get Oiling. We're still here. So I want to create something for her brand and because she already has a brand kit set up. And I'll show you this real quick, what a brand kit looks like. If we go over to brand kit, she's got a palette. It's already picked out here. She's got fonts picked out here. She's got logos already made and she's got a lot of designs that are already made too. So I'm going to show you real quick, just again, inside of Get Oiling. We're going to create an image that's just going to be for maybe this month's promos. So sometimes you'll see stuff, if you have your brand kit set up, it'll say your brand style and it'll have suggestions for you that you can actually borrow from Canva, which is pretty cool. So I'm going to grab this one. And we've already got a good amount of, you know, of pre-made style here. So I'm going to make this, I'm going to ungroup this and just design this as being like a promo thing. So may promos. And my dog hears someone. If you guys can hear my dog. I've, I've got caps lock on here. Okay. And this is, okay. All right. So then we can go in and since our brand palettes are here, we can select these things and upload them. If you guys have already created a design for social media, for instance, if you want to repurpose work that you've already done, if we go to more here and click folders, you can actually go and find work that you've already completed. So I'm going to go to all my designs and I want to grab, maybe she wants to email someone about this leads challenge. So I'm just going to click this. And it imports the style right away, right? If we want to start from scratch here and actually import the entire, the entire thing, you could do that as well. So there we go. We could bring that in if she wants to talk about growing mama's mind, we can email that out. So here, let's just use this design that she's already made. We're going to click send to Get Oiling. We're adding it to the image gallery and now we've got it here. Now, the one thing I didn't do was put my cursor up here and it dropped down here, but that's not a big deal. We can actually drag this up or actually we can copy, delete, move it up here and paste voila. So now I can resize this how I want to. I can add the information that I want to share and then send that email out, right? So this is actually a really great way for you to repurpose your content. So if you're creating, if you're creating social content that's promotional, it's talking about something that you've got going on right now in your lead group, for instance. If you've got an event coming up, you made a design for social, send out an image that you've already made, reformat it for how you want to send it here in your newsletter format. Or, you know, wherever you'd like to put it. If you want to put it in your blog, you could do that as well. I could have put that in the body of the blog, just FYI. We'll put that on the list to make that the featured image. All right. So I'm going to cancel that. Another thing, and I think this is probably the biggest deal, you guys. If you're designing a page, like how many of you have started designing a page on Get Oiling and then got kind of overwhelmed because, you know, you want it to have style. You want it to have these sort of custom looks and features. But you know, it's just a lot of stuff that you've got to have to make it look good. I mean, my goodness, look at Jessica's site. All of these are custom backgrounds that, that are the blog banner setting on Canva, which I'm going to show you guys again, how to do this in just a minute. These are all custom backgrounds. You see these little stars down here, custom backgrounds from Canva. These are all Canva images from this account that I'm showing you right now, right? This is a, this is a background image. So let me show you how you can make some custom backgrounds for a page like this. So we'll use a, a page here in Jessica's account. We'll just create a new one. I'm going to start with a blank template. Or you could start with one that's already made, but here, let's just go ahead and put, there's no, nothing here. We'll just put this in the middle and we want to create a background. So we're going to add a design from Canva. If you want to create a section background, we're going to go to blog banner, which is a large, large file background. Open that up and then using your brand colors, you can grab any of the things that you already see here, right? So this, I'm going to delete that text because I obviously don't want that. But let's swap this out and make it congruent with Jessica's brand. It's just a matter of clicking a few things, right? Pretty, pretty exciting. So once we have this done, we can actually upload this to her Get Oiling site. Here, I'm going to, I want to finish this out just so it actually imports looking nice. Okay. So this will now be used as a page section background. So now all we have to do is click send to Get Oiling. And then it's going to show up here in the background image. We hit done. And now you can add all the text that you want. You can make this a parallax background. You want another one? Okay. Let's, let's add another section here. So I'm going to add one more. How about we make one here actually that has a series of square images? So if you want to maybe use this section to talk about, maybe on your homepage, here's where you could go to my blog. Here's where you get my freebie. Here's my lead group, right? Let's make some Canva images for this. So we're going to replace this by selecting add a design from Canva instead of uploading. We're going to use logo because that's a square 500 by 500. Remember you could always go custom here. All right. If you, if you really want it to be specific, but this is personally, this is what I use. I use the blog banners for section backgrounds and this logo setting 500 by 500 for the majority of square images, whether that be for, for logos actually, or for these sections on the site. So let's say we want to create something for our lead group. Now again, we can use our existing styles, our existing designs that we've already created. And those can be just brought right over and you could use them, but let's do something fun here. Let's look at photos and here we go. We'll use this one. We'll make it fit if I can do that. I think set as background. There we go. I want to make it a little bit transparent. We're going to add some text over it. There we go. Join the tribe. And you can have some more information about it here. You could, you know, put a pretend button in here by adding an element. Of course, you'd want to spend a little bit more on this, more time on this design that I am doing right now. But you get the point. We send this to Get Oiling. Again, real simple. And then you just repeat the same process. And we're going to replace this. Actually, that loaded right there. That's not what I wanted it to do. Did I click it in the wrong place? I'm still learning this, you guys. This is brand new. Let me try that again.
Yeah, I mean, it should be in your image gallery now. So you should be able to go to replace it if it does ever happen. So you wouldn't have to go like recreate it as well.
Okay, got you. All right. So we're, we're discovering, discovering, we need to look at the replace thing here. So now it is in the image gallery. So we can grab that right there. Right? So repeat this for the different sections on your page. And again, it's just, you're still right here. You can design something that you need for right here, which is really, really exciting. Okay. And I wanted to show one more thing for you guys. If we're going to send an email and let's, in this case, let's make this a campaign. So when you are, let's just say, for instance, you're creating a funnel to attract leads. Maybe you've got a freebie that you're giving away, maybe a shopping list or something like that to help serve someone and, and build trust as you're moving toward next steps, as you're moving toward sharing Young Living with them, right? So PDF files are a really great way to do this. Now again, really recommend that you, that you err on the side of batch making your content. But if you have an idea and you're already here and you just want to plug it in, or if it's already done, let me show you a couple of options that you have. So under contact settings, we're going to go to campaigns because this is going to be delivered to somebody right after they opt in on a landing page. So this is going to be get my freebie. I'm going to create it. And then in our first message, we are going to attach a file and we're going to do that with Canva, which is super exciting. So we're going to write a new message. And then we're going to add a design from Canva. So this will be a PDF download file. And we're going to give it a name. So this will be my freebie. And we want to make sure that this is set up correctly. So the image size, which is not an image at this point, it's a file size, but we want to say it's eight and a half by 11. You aren't, you aren't bound to this, but this is like a printable, like, you know, standard printer paper sized. And that's usually what I recommend for PDFs. If you want something that's landscape, it would be 11 by eight and a half. So we're going to go open in Canva. And there we go. It's ready for us. And what I'm going to do, because I know that Jess already has this done, is we're going to go to our folders. We're going to go to all the designs. And I actually have a freebie ready to go right here. All right. So this is, this is actually one of her freebies from Modern Social Mama. So let's just say that she's going to send this to people who sign up for her list, who maybe aren't ready to join the course yet. So our freebie is here now and you can actually see if I click this here and I copy this link and I open it in a new window, bam, there it is. Do you see how quick that happened? We just went from, I don't have a thing to give somebody. It's like, I feel like that was even faster than the image. And so you can swap this out and just have click here. Right? Click here to get your freebie. And, and it's there. And anytime you want to get that again and use it again, all you have to do is look in your files, right? So when you insert or manage files, there's my freebie right there. That was super, super easy. This is the first time I've done that. That's really exciting. I want to try that again. All right. We're going to call this flyer and let's pretend like we don't have something already made. Okay. We can grab, again, we've got all these great templates here. Here's one that's similar to her colors. Okay, this would take some doing to actually like swap out, but let's give it a go. Perfect. It's actually really close to her colors. Yeah. So you see what I'm doing? If we've got our palette set up, we're just going in using the design that's already there and swapping out color and now text, we're going to swap text out here for, for hers. Might need to drag that out just a little bit, right? To get the design right. But now here you go. If you want a flyer for an event, which is what this would be, or if you wanted to have this be a little less busy and just share your information, you know, your shopping list, for instance, you can do that here. And as you saw in a click with the send to Get Oiling, it then winds up right there. Right there, hyperlink and ready to go in your message. So if you want to do this for your campaigns, it's going to be a great way to, to begin that nurture sequence for your leads. Are there any other like iterations of this you want to show and tell?
I can't think of anything offhand. There's a couple of questions that I'm not 100% sure of because, you know, but like, will these images show up in our Canva account too?
Oh, that's a good question.
Couple of people have had that question.
Let's go find out. I don't see it. So this would actually just be a, a one-off thing. Yeah, it doesn't look like it actually saves it to your Canva. So, so if it is something, again, you guys, like this is, this is something that's going to save you a lot of time in terms of like importing it into your system. But I think that the best practice I can possibly recommend to you is if you know you're planning on designing, to go ahead and pre-work, especially if you're going to be creating something like a PDF, a lead magnet, that kind of thing. Because that is something that is going to take a little bit more time and care. You hear me talk about this a lot. If you've been tuning into this training, these trainings for long, our creative and our technical are two different sides of our brain. And a lot of us can't necessarily do both of that work at the same time without shorting out and, and overwhelmed deer in the headlights, right? So if you're, if you're prone to overwhelm, highly recommend you, you follow the sort of batch production strategy and use this feature as a way to quickly import your stuff, right? Because as you saw, we can take things that already exist, that we've already done and get them into our account linked up and ready to send more quickly than we would otherwise. So utilize the work that you've already done as a default. And then of course, use this. If you're making a page and you're like, man, okay, I've used that one section 37 times. I need something a little bit different. I'm going to go ahead and put that here, right? And of course, the saved file does stay in your Get Oiling account. It's not something, if you're making it in Get Oiling, that's, that stays editable in Canva. It's like a direct export and I guess it's one and done, it looks like. Let's see. I think so. For those of you who have questions about like how you- I think so. For those of you who have questions about like how you use Canva with this, like. You don't log into Canva through Get Oil in your. Email addresses don't have to match whatever like I'm literally logged into Jessica's Canva. So so long as you're logged into your Canva, then it's going to work out fine for you. So oh, I think there's, if you guys are using this already. Talk about it in the comments. Let's let's chat about what you're doing. Sean said a couple of things. I think I saw a comment from you earlier. Oh, and by the way, if you have a question for us, please make sure that you're that you're putting it over in the Q and A. So we don't miss you. Sean just said, I created an Insta story and use the graphics from it to invite people to the class that is associated with it. I love it. That's great. Very cool. Okay, is the image you sent to Ked Oil in available to then upload it back into Canva or to use elsewhere? So Camille, from what we can tell right now, and who knows where this goes? I mean, we are talking about, you know, a company. With whom, you know, we don't have control over like their operations and how they function and stuff. So some of these things we're talking about today, such as whether or not something saves with this integration into your Canva account. Or, you know, the ability to save something with a transparent background. These things may shift. Like by the time, you know, if you watch this, you know, future person watching this on YouTube, it may have changed by then. Who knows? But but I think as a best practice, if there's something that. If there's something that you know you want to repurpose. Again, like the best best practices are to pre-work. So pre-work your copy, pre-work your post. Don't go in and say, I'm going to post on social media today. I'm going to write a blog post today. I'm going to send an email today. Plan out, you know, next month, I'm going to send out this many Facebook posts, this many blog posts, this many emails. And then give yourself blocks of time to work on the different parts of that. So that you have a baseline in Canva, for instance. Of, you know, these are the blog images that I'm going to use. And by the way. If you want to use Canva for your Get Oil in blog, you should be, you should absolutely be doing this. Because it brands you and it looks really beautiful. I think we have the recommended dimensions for for featured image blog post was it's like 1200 by 630. Is that right?
Yeah, it kind of matches up with like what the Facebook. Social sharing the images are. So yeah, match it up with that. That's ideal there. I think all the other platforms are following their lead anyway.
Yeah. So so yeah, let that be. If you decide, okay, I'm going to write for blog posts for the next month. Give yourself, you know, start out with a two hour window or something like that and just write them, right? And I promise you, if you do those all at the same time, it's going to happen so much more quickly. Then if you were going to be like, what am I going to post on Facebook? Then you got to think about it. Then you got to figure out what image you're going to use. Just plan a little bit of planning goes a long way with this. And then what you're able to do, again, if you haven't already downloaded stuff to your computer, you've got that easy button, right? Just make sure you've got the right setting from Canva and then take your your existing work, like I showed you using the folders in Canva. And bring the work in that you've already done or reformat something that you've already done. If you've already made a Facebook post, which you can post straight to Facebook from Canva, right? You've already made a Facebook post and you want to make an image that you'll use for your blog post that's talking about the same stuff. Then you're going to use that 1200 by 630 dimension, a custom image, and then. Populate that that file that you've already made, that you've already designed for Facebook. And then, of course, bring that straight into your account. Really, really exciting. Carrie, how did Jessica add a photo to her emails? Let me show you real quick. This is actually really simple and anybody can do it. So that's so two things. First, what you saw there was a saved reply. And so the saved reply. You can put images into and we actually have a number of different saved replies that are pre-made templates for you that you can use. You can also copy them. So we've got recipe templates. We've got. All different kinds of templates in here and you can just go ahead and copy it. Here, let me pull this up real quick. We'll use the wellness one. Okay, so here we go. We want to swap this out. This is again, same thing. You can go ahead and create an image here. So there's actually some that are already here. You would replace this with your text if you wanted to replace the button with the button of your color and so on. You can do that here too. And so this is one way. So what you saw again, there's there's a saved replies an option. But then if you're going to be sending a one off email and you want a picture of you in it, that's a signature. So it's over here under contact settings, general settings and right here. Okay, so that's done. See, does the email address? We've already answered that one. How to use a Canva website template to create a page and get oiling so you can edit and get oiling? So so Sandra, I don't know anything about website templates in canvas specifically. But the way that you build sites and pages and get oiling is, well, okay, so specifically talking about pages. We're using sections, right? So it's not like, you know, you use a page, a homepage template somewhere else, and then you can just load it into Get Oil in. It doesn't work quite like that. We're actually, we're actually more user friendly than that. Matter of fact, so you can, like I mentioned, the blog banner setting in Canva. Is how you would actually be able to create the images that you want in the background sections of your site. And then, of course, if there are additional photos that you want to use, you can use those as well. And again, create those in Canva. So I would use the logo. The logo preset in Canva to make square images. Or the. The blog banner to create section backgrounds. I'll show you another example of a site that's utilized Canva. And she's got a lot of Canva elements on hers. Here's our friend Tanya. So this is an image background from Canva. Again, these are all blog banners. Every one of them, every single one of them, right? And then she has as well, if I can move this thing here. These are Canva frames. That are added here to the site. These are Canva images. And they all click off to, you know, different aspects of her site as well, right? So she's got, she's got a blog image up here. She's got her featured images here again that she creates in Canva. Right? If you add a picture to your signature, does it cost more credits? Not for email.
Nope, we could have one picture or 100 shows in your email. It would still be the same one credit.
Yep, that's right. Email is always one credit. Awesome. Okay, so are you guys excited about this? This is really cool. I'm I'm really excited about it. Definitely want to see what you guys do with it. I hope it saves you a ton of time. We have two Get Oil in website reviews today. Let me see. Melanie, where are you here? I was trying to find your website and I could not find you. Hi. If you could drop your website link in the chat, I couldn't find your. Your account or your or your your website address in Get Oil in. So want to make sure I can help with that. And you are able to talk, by the way. Yeah, yeah. Melanie, if you'd like to unmute yourself, we can chat.
Okay. Hi, just. Hi, sorry. I just put it in the chat.
Okay. So tell me what you're looking to get reviewed about your site today. What kind of feedback are you looking for?
Um, so there's. One. Section under my wellness tab. That breaks into. If you scroll down on the wellness tab. It breaks into mind, body and soul. And so once you click on those, it's those pages that I'm kind of stuck on because that's. Kind of extra info for people, but it's just a lot of links. And so. I just needed somebody outside of my head to come up with. Some other ideas about how to present those pages better.
Okay, okay, excellent. Honestly, the the answer is copy. We we want to, instead of calling it what it is, we want to talk about where they are. And how they can begin a journey toward where they want to be. By clicking one of these options. And then we want to tell them why they should click the mind one, why they should click the body one, why they should click the soul one. And this is where your, you know, you're sort of. You know, your your bat signal to use local language here. This is where that comes in, kind of understanding your person where they are, where they want to be. And and then speaking straight to them here. Because right now, if somebody has has landed here. And they've they've clicked wellness. And I again, I would recommend that you have a little blurb about this too, right? What is the community? What is what is the community offer? There are like nanoseconds that are available to you. With someone landing on your homepage that will cause them to like you have, you have a nanoseconds amount of time for someone to make a decision as to whether or not they're going to click back. Right? And if you manage to get them to scroll far enough. You're going to want to tell them why they need to click the next link, right? Don't just count on them to be curious enough to find their way because people are too distracted. And and to, yeah, just basically way, way, way too distracted. For you to assume that they are paying that close of attention. So to that end, I would actually really recommend that you use this real estate right here to speak to them. Right? Because we've got, this is really great right up here. Maybe consider putting this gluten free wellness curator. In the logo that you use up here and use this space because again, nanoseconds. Nanoseconds. Use a space right here to say, I help people like you. Live this life, right? Have this outcome. Join my community and just have a featured thing that you have right up there that you know would be easy for them to interact with and move toward quickly. I assume, you know, people are going to be. As is the case, most of the time, people are going to be coming to your site because you've shared a blog post on social or because you have offered. A lead magnet on a blog post, right? Most people are not going to arrive just at with Melanie.com. You know, that maybe they see it in your, you know, in a link in bio or something like that. But even there, it's it's more effective to have something like that link page. That tells them where they should go and why. So not just to say, I'm Melanie. I curate wellness gluten free. But to say, I help people like you. And you actually do have some of this right here. So. Yeah, so I'm so glad you're here. I'm passionate about helping women thrive. So a glue to do to do achieve wellness. Okay, become a victorious warrior in your health journey. So put that up here. I help women become victorious well. Victorious in their in their journey right up here. And then give them a guide, tell them to join your community and so on. And then as you scroll a little further down the page, tell them what kind of recipes will they find here? Are they recipes that will save them a bunch of time? Are there recipes that will save them money? What are the metrics that are important to them? In terms of wellness, what does that mean? So if we're talking about gluten free. This is wellness means something very specific to someone who needs to be gluten free. Community, same thing. What do they get? What's the, you know, think about the the comfort. Of being immersed in a group of people who can support each other, who understand the ins and outs. Of of having to live a way that a lot of people are unfamiliar with, right? So I would really just. I would give your coffee some love.
Okay, and when you were talking about moving. Moving information up, were you talking? About the very first section of the page?
Excuse me. So what I would recommend is is right here instead, excuse me, instead of having your name. Really big right here and gluten free wellness curator, I would have a message from down here. Put here instead. So yeah, that that first section. It's called like above the fold is the term. So if you, you know, if you imagine, remember like print newspapers sitting on a counter. People are more likely to buy them if they are excited to read. What they talk about on that front page, that big image, that big copy. That's the reason why people buy a newspaper. That's the old school, like that's why people used to buy newspapers. That's the same kind of phenomenon that we're aiming for here. Because again, split second, somebody's really just kind of passing by, even if they clicked a link and they know that it's you. And it's, you know, and it's nothing against you or anyone else. It's just the way that our modern brains work and our level of distraction. So. I would just, I would shift the real estate.
Okay.
I'll show you an example if that's helpful. Tanya actually has this on her homepage. I help strong women develop their unique talents and gifts so that they can empower others and build abundant wealth without sacrificing being a great, a great wife and mom. It's mouthful, but she knows who she's talking to and her people love her. So when she says discover your strength, it's taking them over to a lead magnet. She's giving them a piece of her program. They can opt in. They can get access. They can get something from her right away. She's captured an email. And that's somebody who's her lead. And that's the most important thing your website can do is capture the people who are interested in connecting with you more deeply. So this is what I mean. Put the real estate here. Give a little bit of of information about you here. And. And move and keep on moving through, right? But the very first thing they they need to see is a message that is for them to them about them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I could find your, go back to your page here. There we go. Yeah, so I would, that's what I would shift around there. And also, you already have a logo up here, so you don't really need to repeat it in the same space.
Okay, and then as far as. Kind of organizing or presenting better. Those pages that are full of links.
Like the wellness page?
Let's say if you. Yeah, if you click on wellness. And then scroll down.
Yeah, so here I would say. Oh, is there? There's more beyond it? Oh, I see.
So quick. Yeah. Whoops, it went back.
You there?
Yeah, so if you click on the mind.
So there is a weird thing happening with my audio right now. Hold on just a second. Okay, can someone say something for me? So I know this is working.
I can hear you.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Okay?
I can hear you fine, yeah.
Great. There's. I like the power has gone out here. It's come back on like there's, there's, there's something in the air out here in the mountains today. So. Sorry about that. And I don't know if you can hear the siren going in the background, but my headphones decided to stop working at the same time. It's one of those interesting tech days for me. So so Melanie, our back to this, we were talking about this section right here.
Right? So if you click on one of those pictures. It brings you to another page that has a lot of links.
Okay. Got you.
And so I was just. If you have an idea on a better way to present that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So what I would recommend here, again, copy, 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 copy. People might click links just because they're curious and they already know you, or you've said, go to this page and click that link. But if you haven't given that specific instruction from a previous page or a conversation or a post online, they're not going to do it most likely. We really do have to tell people what to do if we want them to get a specific outcome. So don't be afraid to do that. What I would consider doing is creating some Canva images for your journal here. So, you know, make a, you know, use the logo. And insert a 500 by 500 logo format image that says journal on it. And then have it link to the journal. For meditative drawing, you could do the same thing and just link the image. Just like you did on this page.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and then again, copy. What's the journal for? Who's it for? How does it help them? What does it help them do? Why should they do something about it? Nature walks. We're talking to someone who's gluten-free, what does this have to do with them specifically? Why should they be interested in your perspective on this? What does it do for them? Why should they spend their time on it? We gotta tell them what's in it for them, and then they'll get something out of it. Even if it's totally helpful for them, if we don't say, hey, you, this right here, this is for you, and here's what it'll do for you, then they're just, our 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 brains are just not very focused, most of the, most of us. So we gotta tell them what's there and what it'll do for them, that's, that's really what I would recommend. And oh my goodness, especially, is this you, is you're podcasting?
No, that one's not.
Okay, yeah, so even if it's if it's not yours or it's someone else's, you could say, here are some of my favorite resources, here's who I listen to. And then grab their logo and put it here, and then go let them know that you did it. And maybe they might want to share you with their audience. Maybe you've got something in common, and now those people can subscribe to your blog or join your free community or something like that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're doing great work, I really like the design here, this is really cute. And yeah, I I'm I'm excited to see what else you put together here. I would just say, as a rule, consider putting, consider putting more into the copy, why should you do this? Why, what are you gonna learn from mind, what are you gonna learn from body, what are you gonna learn from soul? Why should they click it? And you're gonna get a lot more effective experience for people who are going here and and checking you out and what you have to offer.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for coming out, I'm glad you're here with us today.
So Ashley, there's a Q and A question for her that says, how did she get her pictures like that? Looks like scribbled on the ends for the mind, body and soul. So Melanie, I don't know if you want to post what, how you got those pictures in the chat for Carrie?
So I I could actually show you guys real quick. That's Canva, that's a Canva element, so there's a thing you guys, and you could do this straight from your Get Oiling account, if you're on your page builder. You can go and click, use the logo setting, click frames under Canva elements, and there are tons of different shapes. One of them is that scribble, and you know it's a frame because it has like, it has like a background looking image, you know, like a sun in the sky, blue sky, green grass. And then you could drag an image and just drag it on top of it, and it'll crop the image into that shape. Camelia really wants me to show it. Okay, I'll show you real quick. Actually, yeah, let's let's show this from inside of the system. We'll we'll do this in Get Oiling, so going back to settings, custom pages, we'll create a page and if I can move this, I have a huge screen and I don't understand how I managed to use up so much of it. Okay, so.
You're showing a whole screen, by the way, I don't know if that's what you wanted.
I did not know that, that's not my plan, thank you, Greg. All right. One day, okay, here we go. All right, so in Canva, remembering that, I don't know, we we need to take a look at this, because there are places popping it down here beneath right now, I'm sure this, by the time you guys get to it, that might not be the case anymore. So we're gonna use logo here, because it's a, it's a square. There we go, logo, open Canva. Okay, so what I'm referring to here, if we go to elements, and then we go to frames right down here, there are frames and grids. And actually, you know, I I haven't really explored grids much, but I believe what we're talking about is in frames. There we go, it's this one right here. That's a free one, actually. So so you you drag it to size, this may not be the exact one that she used, but you can do this this thing for yourself. And then you go and you find images, so you can go to photos and you can search for stock photos like this one that I used. Do you see what I'm doing? I'm grabbing it, I'm dragging it. And it crops it automatically, and if you want to move around how it's positioned, you can do that too. And then we can send it to Get Oiling. And it did drop it right here, but we can swap it right here because it is now in the files, so. Yeah, and so in this case, again, you know, if this is about, you know, for Jessica, she has, there are people that follow her for fashion, so she could say, you know, get all of my looks, sign up for my newsletter where I talk about where to shop for petite fashion. And then this button could link off to a landing page or to a form pop up on this custom page. Cool? I think it's pretty cool. All right, we do have one more website review and thank you for, thank you for for your patience. This is Marie Stencil, if you're here still, I would super like for you to come out. If you are here, Marie, she does have a really cute site. Please raise your hand for me if you're here, otherwise, we hope you'll come back for another one. I'm excited to see what you guys plan to do with this. Do you see yourselves making a new page? Designing a new page on your site, how do you want to use this? Let us know in the comments. Super excited for this feature. Making a new page, Linda's making a new page, awesome, well, share that with us. And we will review it with you on a future work session. Share it in our group, you guys, if you're not in our Get Oiling Facebook group. Of course, there's lots of, you know, lots of love and ideas shared in there, but share your work, give feedback, tag me, tag the team, tag your, you know, your your fellow cross-team people, we're all in this together. All right, Sean says, I'm understanding the back office stuff more the more I watch y'all, because you move fast, we do. The good news is, hey, if you want to know a hack, and this one is also for you Reds, just FYI. The replay of this is on YouTube, right, or it will be, for those of you who are here live. You can adjust the playback settings up or down on YouTube. So if you want to hear me talk real slow, you have that option in the replay. Just don't, don't speed up Craig or me talking. Because I think it's gonna be an elephant in the chipmunk situation. Awesome, yes, so getoiling.com/websitereview if you would like to sign up for a website review. And, you know, thank you again for for being here and sharing with us today, Melanie. And yeah, for you guys who want to have a future review, definitely make sure that you have that set up. In the meantime, by all means, post it in our Facebook group, we'd love to see you there. Guys, we have a lot of really exciting stuff coming up with Aroma Sharing coming up next month. Please make sure you're in the Facebook group, stay tuned. A lot of fun announcements to share, some of our content partners, young living leaders are contributing resources that are literally the ones that they use themselves to grow, whether that be on social or keeping themselves organized with Get Oiling, some of your favorite content partners are going to be contributing to that, so stay tuned, fun stuff to come. And make sure your team knows about these calls, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, we're here to help everyone grow. Yeah, oh, Amy says, unrelated, I just set up my first automation and it was part of a campaign that was supposed to send automatically, but didn't.
Reach out to support on that, maybe, figure out the details on that.
Yep, yeah, definitely reach out to us for that, support at getoiling.com. And and you guys, that that automation feature is still really new, and I'm seeing some really exciting stuff happening with it. Y'all are figuring out some stuff, we learned from you, in case you didn't know that. Right, we learned from you, we are, we are successful, if you are. So let's get this done, you guys, let's build some beautiful things, use that Canva button, but, you know, also, also batch your work, so you're more effective. Yeah, so we'll see you next time, have a great week, bye, guys.
See ya.
Bye.